Matt, you ready?
Ready.
You ready? Okay, well, we can go ahead and get started. We'll call this meeting to order. We please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Next item on the agenda is our moment of silence. It's an opportunity to bring up someone who you would like us to put some prayers to. New ones?
I just want to share that Melanie Levy lost her father recently, one of our town neighbors.
Thank you. Anyone else? Don't see any hands anywhere. Okay, we can just bow our heads for a moment. Okay, thank you very much. Council, Susan sent you the minutes for the closed session on the 12th as well as our public session. I did not see anybody say that they had an edit. But if you have something and you want to bring it to our attention, please tell us now. Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion. Let's start with the closed session on June 12th.
I make a motion that we approve the minutes from the closed session held June 12th, 2024.
Okay, is there a second?
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, the June 12th public session meeting. Minutes?
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes from the June 12th public town council meeting.
Is there a second?
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, we'll move down to the mayor and town council of the auditing committee. Matt?
Sure. We'd just like to acknowledge that we are reappointing Jeff Capron, Leslie Olson, and Kerry Thompson to the auditing committee. They oversee and review the audit for the town every year. And they've all been with us for numerous years and agreed to join us again.
And do you want to say who's on? Connor, I think I gave you the papers that were actually mine.
It's council member Crimmens and council member Bartram.
I don't know what I'm doing.
That will take them to assignment.
That will be liaisons to the auditing committee.
Okay, thank you. Did I actually do that or?
No.
I probably left them upstairs. It's fine. Just. That's fine. Okay. All right, thank you, Matt. On the council committee assignments, do you want to go through those real quick?
As we mentioned, for the auditing committee, council members Crimmens and Bartram will serve as liaisons. Council member Lifter will serve as liaison through the Board of Supervisors of Elections. Council member Angle will serve as the liaison to the ethics commission. Council member Lifter will remain as the chair of the Greenscape Committee. The Development Review Board will continue to be council member Crimmens and council member Bartram. We are merging the correct term. I kind of combining.
Consolidating, yeah.
Consolidating the pedestrian, PBAS pedestrian bicycling access and safety working group into the Mobility and Traffic Committee. That will be chaired by council member Angle along with one of our residents, Alan Simon. Sustainable Kensington will be chaired by council member Lifter and council member Angle. The Business Community Liaison will be council member Lifter and council member Angle. And the Montgomery County Public Schools Liaison will be council member Lifter and council member Crimmens.
Happy to be the Business Community Liaison with Ann, but I don't think that was.
No, I think it was Connor and Ann.
Oh, that was, okay.
Yeah, sorry, Connor and Ann.
Sorry, Nate.
That's okay.
I was trying to give you more work. And then Mayor Furman, did you want to discuss the ad hocks?
Did you say, did you give the mayor pro tem?
Mayor, I'm sorry, mayor pro tem will be council member Angle.
And, thank you. Yeah, you can, if you want to go through the ad hocks.
Okay, so we will have a parking ad hoc committee that will be overseen by council member Lifter, council member Crimmens, and Alex Marini from the town staff. There will be a code committee that will be overseen by council member Bartram, and I will be working with him on that. We have a public works committee that will kind of be overseen by the mayor and council and staff in addition to the committees specifically Sustainable Kensington. And then with regards to some improvements potentially for the offices of Town Hall, Mayor Furman and I will be working with the council on that.
Okay. And these, these adjunct committees are going to be, they'll be short term. They're not going to go on forever, but they are to get these things, the balls rolling. And we'll get more information on those and how residents can get involved at the, hopefully the September or the October meeting. So. So we're just starting out and trying to inform them and get the timetables and how we want to get things to get moving. Okay, any questions so far? Okay, not seeing any hands, so we'll keep, move forward. Let's see, Connor, you were going to talk about the attainable housing strategies.
So Montgomery County, just as a reminder, and for some people not familiar, the town of Kensington, we do not have zoning authorities. So when new properties are built, whether they're residential homes or commercial projects, we don't zone them. We don't determine what goes where. That is done at the county level. And the Montgomery County Council has received a draft plan from Montgomery County Park and Planning Division that is looking at what is called the attainable housing strategy, part of the attainable housing strategy initiative. This is, has come up through the updates to the general plan, which is known as Thrive Montgomery 2050. And the idea is to find ways to allow alternative or new styles of housing to be built in what has historically been the single family housing area. So a vast majority of Kensington is what they refer to as R60. That just means 60 kind of delineates the width of a lot. But it means one house can be built on one lot, and that is a single family home. What attainable housing would do is allow one structure to be built on one lot, but that structure could be a duplex, a triplex, or a quadplex. So two units of housing, three units of, four units of housing. They talk about them as a small scale, a medium scale, and a large scale. Small scale is, would be by right in what is now known as the single family zoned areas. They would develop a pattern book to give developers and communities ideas of what would be appropriate for those areas. But they envision duplexes, triplexes, and fourplexes. That would be two to two and a half stories. And that is in concert with what our code says now, and two and a half stories is the height for homes that are built in, in the town of Kensington. So this just, what they're trying to do is find ways to add more housing. There's a medium scale allows you to go to three and possibly four stories. Those would be considered stacked townhouses. They would go through a different development process. And then large scale could be four stories and above. Those are primarily looked at being along what they call the growth corridors. Kensington has a couple of areas that add potential additional density through attainable housing. The growth corridor, one of the growth corridors is Connecticut Avenue. So the way that the current recommendation to the county council is, is that anything within 500 feet of Connecticut Avenue on either side could be open for additional density, meaning where it might have been a single family home, it could be medium to large scale. The other one is within 1,000 feet of Metro, which nothing within the town of Kensington is within 1,000 feet of Metro. Within 1,000 feet of the Purple Line, nothing within the town of Kensington is within 1,000 feet of the Purple Line. Or within 1,000 feet of Bus Rapid Transit, which we do not have currently. Or within 1,000 feet of Mark, which we do have. There's a Mark Station right here along Howard Avenue. And so that would mean that anything within a 1,000-foot radius of the Mark Station would be eligible for additional density under attainable housing. So this is before the Montgomery County Council, where they will take it up in a public meeting. There have been several meetings about this in different communities, in different forums, first Park and Planning, now shifting into County Council. If the county council chooses to take an action, whether that's to modify the recommendation, whatever they accept, because they do zoning, it would mean that properties within the town of Kensington would be subject to that. We do have some local controls that we have within our code, such as setbacks, how far the structure needs to be from the front, from either side, your side property lines with your neighbors, or from your rear property line to your rear neighbor, as well as height and overall density restrictions. And we are working with partners within other municipalities to make sure that as these changes are coming, everything at the state level and even the county level right now all says single family home. And the point is the structures of future may not be the single family home. They might be, but they might be duplexes. So we're working on some language and code updates. You're going to hear a little bit more about that to, to the state code, the land use code, to just make sure that we still have the right to control property within the town of Kensington. Your setbacks, your heights, and your densities.
Thank you. Is there any questions from the audience regarding that? Joe?
Yeah, thank you. Connor Crimmens, I'm just wondering, how does this differ from or conform to what we heard from you about a year and a half ago? Based on what council member Jawando, I believe, was bringing to the county council. I mean, it sounded, it sounds somewhat similar, but maybe it's more elaborate than that. I just wonder if you could turn it.
I, yeah, it's a good question, Joe. I would say what this is, is trying to actually codify the bigger idea. The bigger idea that council member Jawando at the county council put out was just the county has a housing shortage. This is a known fact. The whole region has a county shortage, and they've been working together to determine from each state and then from the jurisdictions within the state, how much additional housing can each jurisdiction, Montgomery County, how much could they add to try and take pressure off of the housing market? Part of it is to get more people into homes. Part of it is to get more people into homeownership, but then part of it is also to try and provide relief to rent and to home prices, which have gone up considerably in the last decade. So to Mr. Campbell's question, council member Jawando, his whole idea was, we just need to open up the, call it R60, the single family to other than single family. Big broad idea, without all of the specifics, what the attainable strategy, the attainable housing strategy initiative did is they started to put language around how would this actually work? What would be permitted? Where? How big can it be? What, you know, where do we want to incentivize additional density, right? Allow things to be bigger than they are now. That's the growth corridors. That's these radii around public transit with the idea that, you know, people would move, if we put in more density around those areas, those areas could be served by public transport, which might mean reduced cars, more walkability. That goes into your complete streets and your complete communities concepts that's in Thrive Montgomery. So what is in here, Joe, that in everything I've read, and the county has a lot of information on their website, is they are recommending now formally what they are calling the small scale, the two to two and a half story, up to fourplex. The medium scale, which is three and four story, more like stacked condo, stacked townhouse styles. And the, the large scale, which would be greater than four stories, which is more, you know, looking at larger buildings that would be located along Connecticut Avenue. To give people an idea of what we are looking at, because we don't have zoning, but we have these local controls is if you take a lot in Kensington, and an average size lot might be 10,000 to 12,000 square feet, a little under a half an acre, you know, between a third and a half an acre. If you can fit a 5,000-square-foot house on that lot right now as a single family home, and it's completely permissible, that's just fine. What attainable housing would do is say, you can build the same structure. It is still 5,000 square feet. It is two and a half stories. It covers the same amount of, of lot coverage as the single family home. It's just been divided either side by side or up and down into two 2,500-square-foot residences. Likewise, you could make it a triplex. Maybe it's two below and one up, and there each 1,300 square feet. But it all fits into a package that is a 5,000-square-foot structure. And what we are looking at is a structure, the structure, the structure. It's just that structure needs to fit appropriately on the lot size that it is being proposed for with the setbacks to each side neighbor, rear neighbor, and its setback appropriately within the lot from the street as any other property within the town. Joe, does that answer your question?
Yeah, thank you. I just have two other real quick questions. Do we know, or do you know where council member Stewart lands on this initiative? And secondly, do you know if County Parkland would be exempt from this, from this plan?
I don't have, I can't say affirmatively. I mean, I've talked to council member Stewart many times at many different milestones of attainable housing. I think the reality has always been the county has a housing shortage. We have to look at viable, you know, alternatives and opportunities. You know, the councils, you may remember, introduced accessory dwelling units, ADUs, a couple of years back with the hope and idea that these other types of structures could be built into certain lots that, that they fit into. I think the reality, this is just my opinion of, from conversations, is it hasn't moved the needle, because there really has been very few ADUs. If you look at the total county, there really have been very few. It's not, it's nice. It is a, it is another tool in the toolbox. But it alone is not a silver bullet by any means to help with housing. This is another alternative that opens up a lot of the R60. I, I don't want to put words into council member Stewart's mouth. I do think that she recognizes the need. She was on the cog when they went through and made the, the council of governments for the DMV area. When they made both the recommendations for adding housing as well as divvied it up. So she's been very pro, we need to find more housing. So I would be, I would think so long as everything within the proposal makes sense, that she would be supportive of it, but I have not had that conversation with her. To your second question, are parklands exempt? I have not seen anything that says hardcoded, but I'd also say I don't, I've heard nothing about starting to build in parklands, right?
That would have to go through parks.
Right.
Parks is not going to do.
And then, and it just hasn't come up. So I, you know, I know it's not as firm of an answer as I wish I could give you, Joe, but as of right now, I've heard nothing about, okay, hey, parks are also open, because I think one of the things that Thrive really pushed and Park and Planning wrote that, and the council adopted it, was the absolute importance of parklands and green space and connected public areas. And so to say, hey, those are important, and we need to not only preserve them, but enhance them, and then to come back and say, but we also want to cannibalize them for housing, those, those two things would be tough to reconcile.
Yeah, I agree. Thank you very much.
Anybody else? I saw another hand, but I can't see. Leslie, go ahead.
Leslie, you're on mute.
There, I think I'm off. So I, I thought it was actually a mile from things like Mark, et cetera, but it's 1,000 feet.
So at one point, there was talk of a mile, and now I'm bringing up the actual final as of the priority housing districts where additional density would be, right now it is I thought I read in here 1,000 feet and then 500 feet from the growth quarters. 500 feet is right here. So oh, Mark and March really have a lot of overlap. Thanks for that.
I read through the report.
Well, priority housing district, yeah, using a straight line buffer of one mile from a red line, purple line, and Mark stations plus, okay, so yes, thank you for that, great, so even more so, right? If I measured things out,
it's the whole town.
It's the whole town would be within a priority housing district.
Of the Mark.
Yes. So that has been one area that I know has been, there's been considerable conversation about is not all public transit is the same, right? Metro moves a lot of people. We are in between two metro stations, but we are not within a mile of a metro station. The Purple Line, they don't know yet, but their hopes and projections are that it will move quite a bit of people as well. We know just from the number counts at Mark, Mark moves people, but not in the volume of a, of a metro station. And so is Mark, especially when it is only inbound service in the morning and outbound service in the evening, is it really the same caliber of transit as the others to, to where it should be moving density for housing?
But it almost might be a moot point, because 500 feet along the quarter of Connecticut Avenue is like 90% of the town.
At 500 feet, I actually measured it. It's surprising it's not. It's just down like the midpoint of Washington Street. Like, it, it doesn't even quite make it to Kensington Parkway going eastbound.
Oh, it doesn't?
Yeah.
So maybe half the town.
But the mile, I mean, the moot point is a mile from Mark, we're a half a mile square as the town. So it does the math to be a half a mile square and not be within a mile of the Mark Station.
What kind of opens up almost every parcel that's there. There was mention of a, a plan. What do they call it? A plan book? And, but that was not going to be ready for a while, six months, something, if that. And that from their diagrams looks pretty critical to what we'd want to support. Because it takes the edge off of a, a big box going in between two single-family homes by creating kind of a mancered roof or some type of a dorm or effect on the, on the top. Anyway, it was just a sketch in there, but it seems to me that that would be a critical aspect to this whole concept. And I'm also concerned about the parking, that they are downsizing the need for parking, and yet people have cars, and if you've got multifamily townhouses, you can't create a concrete yard. So I think that's a big concern.
So, and I know others may want to add, Leslie, I mean, I, we share your concern, especially parking, some of the other public infrastructure. You know, some of our, we're an old town, right? We're 135 years old, and some of our streets are actually fairly narrow for surround, other surrounding areas. I mean, some of them are what, 20, 20 feet even with, 22? And many of those don't have off-street parking already. And so if you've been on DuPont and some of the other streets on the north side, and cars are parked on both sides, and there's a retaining wall, and you know, it's already very hard to move through those areas. We are constantly evaluating for emergency services. The idea of putting more cars, because to your point, if you have a duplex, triplex, I mean, our town manager, you know, himself, and my, I've had an experience too, where I've lived in a duplex that was served by six to eight cars. Because it was, you know, I had roommates, and then there's roommates on the other side, and between eight people, we each had a car. What do you do with all of that? What do we do with the more land that is built up, then we have to consider runoff and stormwater management. We are dealing, we are doing a ton of infrastructure projects already. There's impervious services, right? How much do you allow there to be off-street parking? Tree canopy, right? Trees will come down. They can be replaced, but old growth trees, you know, have taken 30 years to get to where they're at. We have a lot of concerns, but we also have the concern that we understand there's a need for more housing.
The county does not want to address the parking issue.
They don't.
They don't. They, they just ignore it.
And, and I would say part of that one-mile radius from any type of transit is they're believing that because you're within that walking shed, naturally you will just take transit. And unfortunately, I'll speak for myself, with the camps and the sports and all the other things that my kids do in Montgomery County schools, I cannot live in this county without my car. To get my kids into the things that we've chosen to put them into, the county just wasn't designed to move people everywhere they needed to quickly and efficiently. And so the county council has to reconcile with that. We don't have zoning, and so what we are trying to do is advocate for those things that we are deeply concerned about in the town.
Any other questions, Leslie?
That's, that's it for now.
Okay, great. Thank you. I don't see anybody online. Anybody in the audience have a question? You do, you'd have to come to the podium. Nope.
Can't get your badge without a question. Those are the rules.
They, they ask their questions with me or. They're covered. Okay, all right. So I believe you're going to write an article for the journal, correct?
I'm in the process.
Okay.
I have to talk to Karen about how much space I'm.
Okay.
Required.
You're required. Yes. Okay, so, so let's just go through the council for any further updates. Darren, you got anything?
I don't have anything.
Okay, Anne?
A few updates. I want to thank everyone that helped with the Juneteenth event, our third annual event. We had a great turnout. We were blessed with good weather again.
Yes, made it.
And it was really exciting to see how it's grown and how much more we've added in terms of history groups and civic groups. So thank you to everybody that participated, because it was a huge effort. Couple of other committee updates. The Greenscape Committee did meet last month, and we met at Ernest Memorial Park right over here. We're considering what can be done to kind of spruce up that park a little bit, brighten it up, open it up. So stay tuned. Our committee's starting to look at that. We'll bring back some ideas for the group. And we're also continuing with our tree education and outreach, and we'll be sharing information with the town about programs that you can take advantage of to get shade trees planted on your property, either at a discount or free. And then the next update is Sustainable Kensington. Our next meeting is July 18th, which is at 7:30 here in Town Hall.
It's the 18th?
Yep. And that's where we'll be just continuing to move forward with the ideas that are already on our action plan. For those in the audience, we're looking at things like community solar, and we've been exploring solar possibilities on Town Hall, which has been challenging. Our Sustainable Kensington Committee is also looking at things like stormwater within private residence areas. We're dealing with
Pollinator gardens.
Pollinator gardens, yeah.
Insect hotels, very sexy topics. What else? Electric vehicle charging around the town. Water, watershed management plans, things like that.
Hope to do silver. I know silver wasn't an option for this year. Is that?
I think it's going to be cleared up by '26.
By '26?
Yeah.
Especially if we get public works. Not this year.
No.
Okay. Yeah. Well, this is now getting harder.
Don't worry about it. And Alex, you won't do that this year.
But we always are looking for new volunteers.
Especially our use.
So I have a quick question on Greenscape. Are, are you gonna, I know we want to open it up a little bit more to get some sun in there. Are you, how are you gonna, are you gonna work with Alex and Mulhern or?
Yes, I mean, we would not, we would, first thing, we were trying to do a little bit of research on the initial design.
Okay.
I think Beth was going to talk to Jason because he was involved.
Right.
But then we wanted to look at some short-term things that could be done. And then perhaps have a little bit more of a design refresh conversation about how else we could open up the space, but still keep it as a contemplative space.
Correct. Okay. No, it's good. I mean, right now you, it's hard to see the memorial, definitely from the street. The flags are all stuck in the trees because the trees have overwhelmed the flagpoles. And as we talked, when I moved here, you'd come down Connecticut Avenue and you'd see the beautiful park, and now it's, it's really, you don't see it anymore. So it's not as.
And I would encourage people, I mean, if you do go step into the space, it is really designed as a beautiful contemplative. For, you know, our, our service members and those who serve the country. So I, I think it would benefit from a little more attention right now.
Yeah. Good. Is there anything else?
No, that's it. No, that's it.
I just want to make a note that I'm hearing thunder.
Yeah. It's coming.
The lights flickered a little bit.
It's coming.
Uh, hopefully it will bring some rain. That would be.
Oh, it's coming.
Okay.
It is, wow.
Oh, whoa. Thanks. Okay.
Okay, yes. Um, so for the pedestrian, that's the last update I'll give, just for the pedestrian bicycling access and safety working group. Because they are merged with the mobility and traffic committee. Um, so very good news. We've, for anyone who's new to any one of these meetings or hasn't participated. I update usually every month on the, on the plans that we have, um, on making biking and walking more easy and connectivity across the town. Through this working group. And one of the things that we did, um, as a working group about a year and a half ago was work with the state highway administration to get BIPPA designation for this town, which is the bicycle and pedestrian priority area designation. Which means that it comes with a whole planning process where we map out recommendations, the state is involved, the county is involved with our other local transportation partners and then our working group. And of course the council, and then we made it open to public engagement and had community members come and give recommendations. That report finally was released on July, July first, um, last week. So I haven't distributed it yet across the, the town because we're gonna probably do an e-blast of some sort. But what that will do is it identifies and consolidates some other studies that we did in the past few years and that the state and the county did into a series of recommendations where we can prioritize improvements in the short, medium and long term to increasing and improving safety and connectivity. So one of the priorities for us as a working group next year is to really start hammering away with the state highway administration on those. And we're talking about things like separated pedestrian bridges along Connecticut Avenue where it crosses the, the train tracks, improving the CSX crossing. Um, bike pathways between the town and the purple line. Simple as crosswalks and improving, uh, the sidewalk with narrowing the street lanes, reducing speed limits, things like that. So there are a lot of really good recommendations. So when that goes out, um, please take a look at it because it's an exciting document that'll guide investment for the next several years or decade.
Can you make sure that we put it in the journal? Cause we'll have a live link, of course.
Absolutely.
The link is live now.
Yeah.
Under announcements on the town website.
Right.
Also, we're on the PBAS page. Yeah. So we, we just upload it immediately as soon as we got it.
Great.
So you can push it out from there.
I've asked, I know, I think you, you were on the email, Alex and, and Matt that I asked. Stay highly, they wanted to do, they wanted to do a joint press release. I'll be waiting and then I'll write mini blast or something. I don't know if it has to be in a journal article, but.
Well, I think just having it in there as a block that you can go to it and given that it's also another means of getting it out.
Okay.
That they would just have to link to it.
Good. The second thing then is just to talk about the, um, our Walktober event, since we won't have a meeting in August. Um, we're proposing, so we have several working group members leading and they're on top of it. They've already met. We plan to do the vouchers again with the Kensington Can. So they've reached out to Tyler, uh, and working with her just to think about how we, you know, get more businesses involved. And what we did last year is if you go to the Walktober event, which is essentially a walk around town to go to the places where we've done improvements in the past year or so and areas that are of need. Um, we do like a walking tour of town and we try to celebrate the Walktober event that is honored by the state of Maryland every October. Um, and then last year we gave out vouchers to people who participated to go to Kensington businesses, uh, for a ten dollar voucher. I was curious, Alex, if you knew how many people about cashes in. I think we handed out about twenty last year.
It wasn't too many.
I think only one.
One and cash them in. Okay.
Wow.
Reimbursed your hard rate.
I think we, yeah, we reimbursed the Chomix Suites.
Yeah.
Okay.
How many people it was.
Okay, so, so you can go in and, and you use your voucher and then they come, the business comes and gets money back from the town. So we're gonna do that again. Um, the dates that we were hoping to do were October nineteenth with the twentieth as a rain date. Want to check to see if that works. Um, that was one thing I wanted to ask. And then the other thing was, do we plan to have, do we have a town committee table at the Labor Day event? And can we do something like the day, like the day of the book festival where we have like a joint table? I know that you probably don't want to do that.
No, we can't. No, I was thinking about the, getting the volunteers to do it, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, we, of course, we can have.
So if we have a table, then we can have some people sitting there handing out information about that. Okay.
I have some PBAS, um, flashlights available too. Yeah.
Yeah. Um, great. So how does that date work? Can I give them the green light?
It looks okay to me. Does anybody have any objections to the nineteenth or twentieth?
I sense sometimes it conflicts at the pumpkin rock and roll.
I don't think they'll be doing that this year mainly because of the, uh, Warner, yeah.
Great. I think that's it for me then.
But I think we had it last year and it was fine. It's a different group of people that attend, so.
And we'll have a finalized route by the end of August.
Okay. 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 Make sure you reach out to Carrie Anne so she can also.
They already have.
Oh, they have? Okay.
It's all, we should have.
Okay, good. Um, okay. Um, Connor?
Um.
Oh, you have a question? Yeah, let me get through Connor and then I'll, I'll ask her questions.
Um, mine and I'll keep it short. Just one update, St. Paul Park. Uh, we actually met onsite with, uh, playing ground specialist, um, uh, Jeff came out to walk it with us to look at the designs that were already put together that allowed us to secure the grant, um, from the state. And now what we're doing is trying to put together a final plan. So he is putting a final design together. What we are doing at St. Paul Park, for those who are familiar with it, is we are making some modifications to the ground cover, which is currently mulch. As well as adding in and modifying a couple of, like a swing set and adding in what they call new, new play equipment, apparatus that are aimed at, um, being accessible to people with mobility issues. So whether you're in a wheelchair or you're in a walking device, or you may use crutches, that you would still be able to play and play with able-bodied kids at the same time. So we have a, a group of moms of children with mobility issues who have been helping to consult with us on what really are the right kind of equipment, um, what things meet ADA standards, but really aren't effective and kids don't use them. Um, and then we've been looking at ways to, um, work within the footprint that we have and other restrictions that we have with prior grant money to make sure that we are improving the park for all kids in a way that most effectively uses the space. The last part of that is that mulch, which is the current ground cover, one of the things we would look to do is remove the mulch and then create one contiguous area from the swing sets through, uh, the walking, the, the, the path to the, uh, back gate to the spring, um, Montessori school, but into the main play area with a rubberized, um, uh, ground cover that you see at kind of all quote modern playgrounds nowadays. Um, this is not only for impact when you're coming off the slides or, um, ladders. It is also for the ability that these mobility devices can get over them. They can't get over the mulch right now. It also significantly helps with multi-generational or people, kids who are being watched by grandparents because it's level footing. Mulch is really hard for people that might have, uh, unstable walking. Um, so that's generally looking at, uh, multi-generational. So this kind of tackles all of that to try and make a more inclusive playground. So plan right now is designs are gonna come in, we'll stake some, I think the idea is QR codes for people to be able to look at them. You know, give thoughts and, and feedback, but right now we are trying to, uh, we're looking at the construction window to be March. The ground cover can't go in during cold months because it's a rubber product. Their fall is already filled. We will be one of the first couple of projects in March. Right now, based on what we've sketched off them, maybe five weeks or so that the playground would be somewhat inaccessible while we make these improvements. The hope is we are trying to stay to the very front part of spring so that it's still kind of a low demand time.
When do you hope to have the QR codes up again?
Soon as I get the things back from Jeff.
Okay.
Yeah. Once we have the designs that we can put it up, I'll work with Carrie Anne to have the QR code go to a page on our website.
Okay. Can, um, can the crew put up maybe a, a nice, uh, not a big, but a, a billboard type thing that's small that people can walk up to? So they're secure and not just stuck on a fence or something like that. Yeah. Cause Jason could do a nice job.
Yeah.
You know, making a nice little sign that could be look more permanent.
Mm-hmm.
You know, to last through the winter so that people can look at it. So not just put on a stick or something like that. Okay.
That was.
Okay. Um, does anybody have any questions regarding the council reports? If you do, you'll have to come up to the podium. Sorry. I know. Sorry. I just give your name and your street. I, I give a small one, but.
Okay.
I, so Mark, Mark Longsworth. Um, long-term resident of Kensington. We've been on Knowles Avenue for twenty-two years. Maybe three years, maybe. Um, wondering for council member Engel. Um, uh, are there specific, we, we are both pedestrians and cyclists and advocates for improving pedestrian and cycling. Um, but we're also concerned citizens and residents of Knowles Avenue. And wondering, are there any specific plans in place, um, that you're aware of? Or that, that you could talk about for Knowles Avenue specifically? Um, we have in the past couple of days, um, gone out to our car to find, um, yellow lines painted on our driveway about twenty feet in from the road. Um, we've heard in the past that there is a chance of, um, a bicycle path being put alongside of Knowles Avenue. I know that Knowles is a state highway. I, I did, um, call, uh, actually earlier today to talk to the county department of transportation, see if they knew anything about these yellow lines. And just wondering if there's anything we should know about what's happening on Knowles Avenue. We're concerned for, um, you know, that, that portion of our property, which actually may not be our property, but may belong to the state.
They're right away. Yeah, but, but it's where you park cars and there's a lot of.
Yeah.
To the, to the extent that I know, there's nothing in the works. Uh, I don't know if anyone else knows about anything specifically for Knowles Avenue. But I will say that is, it is an interest of the working group to study better ways of moving east-west along Knowles or door. And whether that's exactly along Knowles or going through each drive and somehow back through, um, behind Garrett Park Estates. There's really not a good route to go, um, safely right now. So that's something that we've talked about in the working group, but it's only through conversations. It may be something that we want to study at some point. But it's not in our jurisdiction. We need to partner with, I mean, only one is state highway, but then most of Knowles Avenue to Rockville Pike is out of, outside of Kensington. Our stop's at Summit Avenue. Um, but it would be something we would need to partner with the state and county on, but there's nothing, um, that is advanced on that. I don't know anything that's underway. And Connor written here that it's utility markings for the yellow lines.
Yeah, that is.
It's for WGO, Washington Gas. It could be, the markings could be for anything.
Well, you've got a couple of houses that are being.
Yeah, it could be.
Built on Knowles.
I, I had suspicion that could be it.
Yeah.
Wanted to make sure.
Uh, it could mean anything. Um, they may not have anything planned right now. They're just trying to figure out where laterals are. We, I have no idea.
Sure.
I, I recommend that you reach out to Washington Gas.
Okay.
Uh, or you can reach out to the staff directly if you have any other questions.
Sure.
Figure something.
And then, um, another ongoing issue on Knowles Avenue is of course safety of crossing Knowles Avenue and speeding on Knowles Avenue. We had, um, Al Carr was a very good advocate for us to try and improve things. I, does the county or does this, the council have any influence on getting a speed camera, something as simple as a speed camera? We've been told we can't get speed bumps because of emergency vehicles. Um, but I mean, it is an issue that crossing Knowles Avenue, there's a crosswalk between, um, where we live and the library. And literally people are reluctant. They just don't want to stop for you and they zoom right by.
Yeah. No, it is frustrating. Yeah.
I mean, I know it's outside the jurisdiction, but I'm gonna, I'm.
Yeah.
Did that come up at all with the, um, he'd asked that crossing in particular by the library?
So not the library crossing per se, but this east-west movement, that's a safer movement, is flagged as somewhere to study. And that includes the cross, crossing Knowles Avenue, not just moving along it. Um, and one area that is very specifically singled out is um, the crossing at Dietrich between Summit Avenue and Connecticut Avenue. Because right now it's, um.
It's two lanes and goes to, uh, four lanes.
And people cross there to go over to Wyandotte Co. and it, and the Vass Shopping Center. And if and when the development gets built on the corner, it's gonna be more people crossing. So yes, there's, we've, we've asked for, we're, we're, we're wanting to prioritize safety and, and access. But there are only certain things that we can do that are in our jurisdiction, but it's a lot of partnership building and working with the state highway and the county. But it's, we've heard these concerns before and I, you know, we've, we.
Certainly a Dietrich, it, it is harder to be speeding a Dietrich than it is in front of the library. I mean, that's a long stretch there and people just come zooming up the hill or zooming down the hill.
Yeah.
Has anybody ever, and you all have been on calls, bless you, thank you, with state highway administration a lot. But has anyone ever proposed a, a flashing pedestrian beacon? Like they have it on Tuckerman. You know, where people speed on Tuckerman.
They have it up on Strathmore and Garrett Park as well. That it's very effective.
For that section.
I mean, I'm being tongue-in-cheek here. We have them now on Metropolitan. We have one on Metropolitan.
How many years?
It took us seven years.
Twenty years, by the end of this.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, but I do things like speed cameras, because I, you know, I go through that stretch all the time. The other thing is this, the crosswalk had to go somewhere. It almost seems like the worst place to put it because you don't realize it's a crosswalk. You can't see the continental markings until you're on top of the crosswalk.
Right.
And the walking path on the south side of Knowles, I think for a lot of people, it's lost on them that that's actually a walking path. Right? It's on, it's under trees. It doesn't, it's not like a sidewalk that you see.
Um, it is there though.
It is there.
Yeah. Um, there, there.
But the road, if you look, is actually the official road.
Mm-hmm.
So, and there is not a full sidewalk on, on the north side, I think of Knowles.
It's true. It stops after the library.
Yeah.
So recommendations might be because it's a state highway and speed cameras, if it's Montgomery County DOT, you know, reach out to Kate Stewart's office. They're really, really good, um, to talk about speed cameras. But it might also have to be include state highway, which then you're into, you know, Jared Jeff, who's down that way. He's very familiar with the area. Um, because, you know, all, it, it's painstaking how long some of these things take, but it also has to start with one phone hall. And trying to get the right people from, uh, boots and, uh, traffic engineering and the county to look at those type of other options, right? Something to bait the.
But I'll say, yes, your individual action is helpful and I think you should do what Connor's suggesting, but if this is something that we end up taking forward to study, it's one of the priorities, this stretch, um, east-west stretch, and then the stretch I mentioned, going from the mark station to the purple line along Kensington Parkway and getting this, a bike path. These two are priorities for the working group this year. So if you would like to get involved, because it doesn't, this is one of the, one of the one areas where you don't have to be a town resident. I, it sounds like you're maybe outside of the, are you outside of the town boundaries? So you could still, you could still participate in the working, in, in this, in this as a, as a member or as a participant to kind of shape that conversation and what, what we would look at. So if you're interested in it, I'll leave my email and you can get involved that way too. So, you know, that's.
Yeah, we've been trying for many, many years to get some action on that road.
Yeah.
But it unsuccessful.
Well, I'll give you, I'll, I'll share my email. So thank you for follow-up.
Thanks for coming.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. So any other questions regarding the council reports? Leslie?
Um, all right. Thank you. Uh, this is, um, regarding the playground equipment over at the, um, park. Um, at the budget meeting, there were renderings. So what you're going to show us is um, more detail of the equipment.
Yeah. So the renderings helped with what town staff needed to put together for the, um, the grant proposal. We've received the grant proposal. Now, one of the things that we went back and talking with some of the, um, parents on was, you know, we've got to make specific orders of equipment. And I learned at that onsite about things called like transfer height. Um, a couple of things we had, we're looking at were transfer height apparatuses that they're just like, they're, they, they don't actually help kids with mobility. They meet the standard for ADA. So they helped us to look at a couple of other items. And so what the mayor was alluding to, this QR code is it would have the renderings of what, you know, the, the new look of the park would be. You know, you could click through some images. It would also delineate what the new play, uh, apparatuses are. So you could kind of see what they are and where they'd be located.
Okay. And there are a lot of, um, mature trees in the area. They're, they'll remain.
Oh, yes, that we were very adamant about it. There is one.
Yes, that we were very adamant about it. There is one young sapling. If you're, when you're out walking your dog and you get in between the play structure and the swing set, there's just one little sapling. You can probably tell me what kind of tree it is, but that one we would look to relocate, just that one small. It's like maybe five feet tall. All of the other trees, we are incorporating into the design.
Okay. Okay, that's it. Thank you.
All right, I just have a couple of just mentions here. I just want to acknowledge that Darren and I attended the MML Summer Conference. It was a great event this year. I have to say the Montgomery Chapters Get Together was probably one of the best ones I've ever been to. That was good. And of course, they have lots of great speakers and also breakouts. So Darren, did you want to?
No, I think it's useful to get together with like-minded people and figure out what they're doing and copy what they're doing. And and just learn more. I Matt, I don't know if we've ever explored the Circuit Rider program, but it's an interesting thing I've heard about for the first time at this meeting about how you can sort of pool resources with small municipalities.
Like grant writing, I think was a good example.
They're doing that now?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So it's just some, it's a way to join forces and save a little money.
Yeah. And and I neglected Alex Marini, our assistant town manager, also joined us. So we had staff this year join. So it was great. So I also want to acknowledge that we had the bike parade last week. I was the only elected official left in town. Everybody went on vacation that week, but next year is our thirtieth bike parade.
Wow.
So let's try to save the date, okay? It's always on July fourth. If you're able. So it is our thirtieth.
It was a good showing.
It was a good showing. It was hot. It was super hot and I think it was a very big getaway weekend because Fourth of July was on a Thursday, and so it just seemed like a good time for people to get away, but it was a good good event. Mark Hudson, thank you, thank you, was the sponsor and it was a really great event. So.
That reminds me.
Uh huh.
If we are not having a council meeting in August, is anything you want to preview for Labor Day?
Well, I will let town staff bring that up. So you guys are jumping again here, so we'll we'll get to that. Soon as we get to town, the staff manager stuff. So anyway, I did want to remind everybody that the the journal deadline is July twenty-second. If you're going to provide a journal and that will come out of the week before Labor Day. Okay, all right, that's all I have to add. All right, so we'll move down to the town manager and staff. Did you want to address Labor Day? Matt? Right around the corner.
Monday, September second is vastly approaching for the town staff. I don't really have anything to report right now, other than I mean, we have our basic permits. We we're not really there yet.
Okay.
I mean, we'll probably get there about the first week of August. We'll start really starting organizing everything.
Well, the great thing about the the Labor Day Parade for us is we're just supposed to show up. So if for some reason you are out of town, they'll let Matt know. But thank you. Anyway.
We are, you know, we are actively requesting sponsors. We received one sponsorship so far. Cold sponsorship was Stroh Snyder's Hardware. And working with M and T and Fitzgerald Automotive, see if they can be a platinum sponsor again.
Great.
You know, it's, like I said, we're we're a few weeks away from really getting getting there, so.
That reminds me.
Yeah.
Since since we are not having our August council meeting, I should also mention we are going to have the Fourth Annual Community Back to Cool Block Party.
Right.
And so we we picked the date of Saturday, August twenty-fourth, two to four PM at Kensington House Lawn. This is the Saturday before we get back to school.
Right.
And so really hope to see a bit of turnout there.
And we.
Put info out on the list.
Yeah, and we have secured, though she's going to put that in the kiosk tomorrow. Uh, we have secured Town Hall as a backup, too, if it rains, so.
If we want to do the food this year. Have her reach out.
Yeah.
Now.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
I I also want to, all these things pop into my head. I also want to remind the council that the Archives event is tomorrow night here at Town Hall. The drop-in is from five to seven thirty. They will do a brief presentation at six thirty. And then there'll be light refreshments. So if you're able to come, that's great. If I'm out of town like five days this summer and she picked one of the one days that I'm out of town, so I will not be able to be there, but Mayor Pro Tim might be able to show up. It's okay. Anyway, so Lisa hopes to have these events maybe every other year to open up the archives. So I think that's great. So, okay, all right, well, let's move on. It is eight o'clock, eight oh two, so we'll go ahead and move from the public forward. If there's anything that you wish to bring up that's not on the agenda, we'll talk about it now. Leslie? Can't hear you, Leslie.
There, okay. So I I want to talk about the the Little Library in St. Paul Park. I did call. I understand that it's a permanent installation. And first, I want to say it's a really clever design with the two houses, two boxes at different heights. But I and I also understand that it was a a troop that created it. It was, they earn a bronze medal for completing the activities. And and I looked online to look at other boxes that the Girl Scouts have installed throughout. And so I want to say I'm really disappointed that either the council, the liaison on the council and the troop leader were not more involved in this bookhouse. It it is not ready for prime time. And I can't imagine that the council would allow any contractor to perform work, leave the area in the condition that it's in and walk away from something looking like it does. Paint is all over everything. I checked it this evening again, just to see if something was had been taken care of before the meeting. And there are a dozen of blotches of paint of all color on the grass, on the sidewalk. There's paint on the on the glass that covers the window boxes. It looks nothing like you know, professional is maybe too strong a word, but most of the ones that are online are very simplistic. So I'm wondering what the thoughts were behind allowing that books to go in St. Paul Park when so much effort and so much detail is always devoted to everything associated with anything the town does, including a cover at the dog park.
I can.
You want to address it?
Well, I don't know if I can address it. I can tell you what we're going to do.
Well, I know it wasn't put in the exact position that we wanted it in, and we will be adjusting that. I did not notice any paint on the ground when I was out there.
So I mean, I, this was done by seven and eight-year-olds. So obviously, this was not done by a professional contractor. We we are aware of some of the issues. The Public Works Crew will be addressing them.
I mean, is it dangerous or just ugly?
It's ugly.
Okay, well, that's.
It doesn't represent. Sets the wrong tone and doesn't compliment the work that the scouts got credit for. So there was a miscommunication on the end product, on who was in charge. I don't know, but somehow.
I cannot address that. I I can address, we we are aware there's an issue. Public Works Crew is aware of it. They know about it. It is something that will be corrected to some degree.
Is the correction just to move it into the position it's supposed to be in?
As of right now, what they're going to do is the post was they used concrete post.
Right.
Supposed to. So we have to rip that out. We're basically going to put in a new post. We need to turn it, so it's supposed to be facing into the lead walk. And then the Public Works Crew will install a concrete slab to walk up to it with regards to maintenance. You know, if it's something that we need to address and replace, we will in the short term or in the longer term. We do have an agreement with Spring Bilingual to monitor it daily with books and the location was chosen specifically because it's under twenty-four hour surveillance. You know, I mean, we gave the Girl Scout troops an opportunity to put something in there. If it's something we need to clean up, we will. So.
But I think allowing six and eight-year-olds to do something for a park that's enjoyed by everyone was a mistake. And if they can't bring it up to some type of standard, then it ought to be removed. And and I'm.
Only one.
Leslie, I.
Dangerous isn't it, but it is. I don't think the park is appropriate for children's artwork unless you're doing a temporary exhibit.
I mean, I have to say, I haven't seen it, but I I would disagree. A park is a space for children and families and having a community troop project done by children, I think, is entirely appropriate.
Okay, then everyone has to see it, though, because on theory, what you've said is exactly right. The park is for kids. This is a Girl Scout. They have a little plaque on there. But why in the world would six-year-olds be allowed to finish a product that is a permanent installation in the park? And then when you look at all the paint around it and all over the glass, I I'm just, that doesn't make sense. And I'm I'm not the only one who has commented.
I I have seen it. It I it didn't strike me as out of place for a park visited by kids. And it sounds like it's going to get cleaned up and reoriented, so I'm content.
And I will add, because I see it three times a day when I walk my dog and live across the street from it. I happen to really like it. I like what it represents, that it was hard work of six and seven-year-old scouts who took to finding a design, doing all of the woodwork, doing all of the construction, doing all of the painting, doing a service project together to bring something to their community that they can see every day when they come and visit the park, which many of them do, and many of them live in that community. Yes, there is paint on the concrete. It can get power washed off, and it will. And yes, we wanted it oriented a different way. That will be corrected. I will disagree, Leslie. When I walk by and I see it, it brings a smile to my face because I know many of the kids who put a lot of hard work and a lot of sweat, because it was a hundred degrees that day, to pull this together, to do the work, they are incredibly proud of not only the work they did, but their contribution to a place that they visit nearly every day. I think it represents the best of Kensington.
And maybe that's the difference, because I think that while it was a work of art, et cetera, somehow, and you've got four kids, and so you're looking at this a little bit differently. Anyone else might walk by and see it and think of it only as something that is not a work of art. They don't know the kids. And it, you know, it's not cute. I mean, I think there has to be a balance on items that are put in the park on who they serve, how they represent the efforts behind them. You're absolutely correct. It's a kid's playground. They might have worked hard. And the and in in somebody's yard, wouldn't that be great? But it's been a month. No one has cleaned it up. Many people haven't even seen it. And you're looking at it from a perspective that you know the kids who did the work. So we're really coming at this from different ways, but I think that the council should, it needs to be more objective in looking at this.
I disagree, Leslie. I think we were highly objective. I think we looked at it and understood these were six and seven-year-old members of the community in a scout troop who are building it as a community project. And I think you're coming at it from anything that goes into a public space needs to be done by professional contractors and be done at a professional.
No, if you go online and look at the at the bookhouses that have been done, they've got pictures of the kids next to them. And you can see, because Girl Scouts do this everywhere. It's not just a Montgomery County or a local. That bronze star is given out for this particular activity everywhere. And they're all very nicely done, neatly painted and something to be proud of.
So I feel.
Well, you you express your opinion.
Okay, we appreciate it. And but I think the council and and myself are are happy with the way it is now, especially once we get it into the area where it's supposed to be.
Okay, that's unfortunate.
Okay. I want to remind everybody, it's been super, super hot. So Public Works is doing the best they can right now just to keep everything cleaned up, so they will get I myself am waiting for the historic history boards to be installed at the train station. And so these things will get done as the weather cools off a little bit. Okay, all right, anybody else? Joe?
Yeah, I was wondering if you could just go over again, the ad hoc committees that you mentioned at the outset of the meeting? They don't appear on the meeting agenda, and I'd just like to know what they are.
Yeah, we talked about them in our organizational meeting. We're just trying to actually form these committees that will be short-term. One is is looking at the parking for particularly the south side around Baby Cat. Looking at, you know, getting a someone to an architect to design the Public Works Building, making the office here at Town Hall laid out a little better, so it's more efficient. And then there was, what was it? The code, updating the codes. So those are things that I we've assigned to each to the council members. They will come back in September, October of creating a timeline and how we're going to you know, get the public involved. So that's basically what it is.
Okay, great, thanks. Who are the the respective chairs of those ad hoc committees?
I'd be careful about calling them committees.
Yeah, they're not really, they're just a short-term.
Call them task force.
Task force.
In the previous.
Okay. Yeah. Okay, so we're changing that to task force. Let's see, Darren and Matt will be handling codes. Connor and Ann will be doing parking and with with Alex, they'll be looking at the parking. I'll be looking at office space with Matt. And then.
And then for the.
Public Works.
I would be on the.
On that.
On the, I would help with that.
Right, help with that and with Matt.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
Very good, thank you. And so no council meeting in August. Is that is that right here?
Correct. We were going to announce this later on down, but yes, we, everybody else, we're going to take a recess in August. We have a lot of traveling council members in August.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay. Anybody else? Don't see hands. Okay, so we will move on. So town manager and staff?
Sure, thank you, Mayor. We just want to acknowledge we had initially advertised to a number of residents a sign variance hearing for this evening. However, when we started to put together the 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 documents, we realized that what they were requesting was an internal illumination of the existing sign, which is prohibited in the code, so we pulled it. Alex spoke with the property owner and the sign consultant advised them. They will be filing a regular permit to reface the sign with no internal illumination, which will not require variance.
Okay.
So we just wanted to acknowledge that because it did go to a number of residents as a potential variance.
Okay.
So we just wanted to make sure.
So they don't need anything.
They do not need a variance. They will not be doing.
So that sign's not lit at all?
It it is lit. It can be lit now. When they reface it, they cannot put backlit illumination. The only way they could do that is if they change the sign to individual channel letters. Or they can put external illumination on it like a like a goose neck or something like that. That would not require variance.
Okay.
Again, we just, we had sent that to the abiding, confronting and conforming residents.
Well, I know one of the residents responded and was okay if it stayed on its current schedule, but this one just won't be lit at all.
We will not allow it to be illuminated as is.
Okay, perfect.
And they are aware of that.
Okay, and they're okay with that.
Yep.
Okay.
Uh, wanted to make a quick update. Last month, council adopted resolution number R dash twelve dash twenty-two. We had received one proposal for a storm drain cert. We were waiting for two more. We didn't you know, due to time issues, staff requested council approved funding and then we would accept a a contract and we did. We awarded it to Cass Engineering for nine thousand nine hundred dollars, which was a significant savings from what we had received on the initial proposal. So we were happy with that.
Perfect.
So just wanted to make that note.
Okay. Did any? Uh, did anybody have any questions regarding number one? I don't see any hands, okay?
Okay, uh, St. Paul Street, Farragut Avenue Storm Drain Project, um Alex and I met with um the project manager on Monday. We are moving along. The survey for the utilities is scheduled for Monday, July twenty second. Um, he'll be in field for about two or three days. We should have the survey results within about three weeks. Uh, speaking with the hydro project engineer, uh it looks like they'll be able to turn around the um the plan by September fifteenth. So by September fifteenth, we should have the storm drain engineering plans and we'll be able to move forward from there. Uh, so we're happy about that. We were a little concerned, things that things have taken time. Engineering is is a challenge sometimes, but um we should have a plan by September fifteenth.
Okay, um, is there any questions regarding uh number two or three? Okay.
Uh, and ten town bridge repair project, uh received my update from the project manager. Um, they are completing the sixty percent plans. We should have them by the end of this month. Um, and I'm hoping to have an RFP out um late, late summer, like Septemberish to October. And uh there's a few questions they had for us that I that I think we need to clear, that I need to clarify with the project engineer um with regards to some of the parapets and materials and stuff that they want to put in the RFP. And uh we decided, I know we had talked about uh Montgomery Parks asking us to do an access point. They are leaving that off the engineering plan. Um, following conversations that we had with the project manager, we determined that it is Park's project. They should pay for it. We should not have to pay for it. Uh, they're going to leave room in the engineering plans if they want to do the access point. But if Montgomery Parks wants us to move forward with that improvement, they're going to have to pay for the.
What access point?
They want to move the bridge.
Crosswalk?
Yeah, the main access point into Kensington Park is a um at mid block crossing.
Yes.
They want to move that up to what would be the stop sign of Frederick Avenue and Frederick uh Kensington Parkway.
Yeah.
Um, so we will reach out to our contacts over at Montgomery Parks and advise them that they'll need to do the uh the survey and the engineering for that.
Any other questions from Matt on floor? Any questions from the audience on floor? Joe?
If all goes well, when would these um the respective bridge projects be completed? I know we've talked about this for a long time now, and it's, you know, those bridges aren't getting any, any more stable.
Uh, there's no structural issues with the bridges, Joe, as we've mentioned that multiple times. These are ADA and parapet issues with vehicles. There's no structural issues. They all rate out at ninety or above. Um, if the RFP, if the RFP were to go out in September, October, uh, my guess is construction would not begin until the spring of twenty twenty five. Uh, I do not know anything other beyond that. My guess is they'll probably have to phase the bridge projects. Um, but uh at least as of right now, without talking to a contractor and having having something you know, formal, I would say it would start sometime in spring of twenty twenty five.
That's an optimal timetable, I gather.
Yeah, I mean, like I said, um, you know, I'll know a lot once the RP is out, you know, if we get one bid, if we get five bids, it will kind of clarify a lot of things for us. We just don't know right now, so.
Be good, thanks.
Right, uh, we'll move on to ordinances, uh resolutions and regulations.
Um, Mayor, at the June council meeting, um we held a uh sign ordinance variance uh with regards to one zero three three five Kensington Parkway, which is the Compass Art Center. Uh, this is the formal resolution approving what the council already directed the staff with regards to the to the uh sign variance.
Okay, council, do you have any questions regarding the variance? Let me get a motion.
I'll move to approve resolution R dash thirteen dash twenty twenty four.
Is there a second?
A second.
All those in favor? Okay, thank you very much. Number two?
Thank you, council. Uh, resolution number R dash fourteen dash twenty twenty four uh is the formal resolution um accepting the variance request from thirty four oh one Ferndale Street to place a six foot fence within the front plane of the property. Uh, this is in accordance with section five dash one oh nine I, fences, walls and retaining walls of the town.
Okay, I went by there. It's a nice looking fence. Um, is there a um, any questions from the? Okay, can I get a motion?
I move that we approve resolution number R dash fourteen dash twenty twenty four.
Is there a second?
A second.
All those in favor? Okay, thank you very much. Number three?
Uh, thank you, council. Um, resolution number R dash fifteen dash twenty twenty four uh is a resolution of the mayor and town council uh proving the installation of a driveway at thirty five oh five Kent Street with a width of thirteen feet, ten inches. In accordance with section five dash one oh seven E of the town code, there was uh a typo or a grammatical error that council member Lifter pointed out to us. We did correct that for the for the uh final document that we'll we'll post.
Okay, is there any questions? There a motion?
I move that we adopt resolution number R dash fifteen dash twenty twenty four.
Is there a second?
A second.
All those in favor? Okay, thank you very much. Okay, um, the last item, um, as it's been mentioned throughout the meeting, we are going to recess in August. Uh, our next meeting, uh, we're going to, um, we have a conflict in September and October. So everybody listen carefully. Our meetings uh for September and October, um Tuesday, September tenth and Thursday, October tenth. Um, do we want to make either one of these a Zoom meeting or both a Zoom? We will go to Zoom when the weather definitely gets colder. Okay, so we'll meet here in September for sure. Do you want to do October as well?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so we'll meet in person, September, October, and then we'll um go to Zoom.
Maybe we'll get another.
In November, December. It's nice to have them. They're a nice group. That's actually half of the number that actually came to me earlier. I know, well, they got bedtime. Anyway, no, they had some good questions. They were unfortunate. A lot of the quick, well, the county takes care of this.
Yeah, exactly.
Anyway, okay, uh, I just need a motion to adjourn.
I'll let your motion.
Is there a second?
A second.
All of the favor? Thank you very much. Thank you.